...report that she and I attended a workshop that basically was about investigating harassment in the workplace. It was very enlightening. And we presently are having a lot of ongoing discussions about federal employment law and being inclusive in the workplace and our town personnel policy. We know the policy needs some work, so we're going to be, Amy's going to be checking the rest of the things that we need to be changing just to get clarity on and bringing up to date with some of the most recent rulings. Also, Amy made a slide presentation to the department heads on Monday, and it was regarding some of the laws regarding discrimination, Title VII Civil Rights Act, and we had, we're having everyone sign that they received the information. And so then we'll keep a record of that. And also, our town attorney vetted the form that we're having folks look at and sign. So I've asked Amy to just kind of come and just kind of go over some of the things we've talked about and really what is going to be our plan as we move forward to make sure that we are, as we focus on performance in the workplace, that we are doing the best we can to represent the surrounding populations in various sundry ways. So Amy, thanks for coming. What are we, what are we working on?
Well, Shannon and I started these discussions back in February, you know, just about equality in the workplace. And done some metrics for him, and we have thirty-eight full-time employees in the town. Women only represent twenty-six percent of the total workforce. African-Americans represent eight percent, and Latino Hispanic only represent two percent. So we really are in need of diversifying our work staff. Shannon has made some headway with that. He's hired eighteen employees since June of 2018. Thirty-three percent of those new hires were women, and seventeen percent were minorities. Sixty-one percent of those eighteen employees were assigned protected class. So some headways being made, but we definitely need to make more headway. Women and minorities are seriously underrepresented in leadership roles, so we'd like to see that change. As far as the whole workforce, we've got some recruiting challenges because of our location, and we're just going to have to be a little bit more widespread in our recruiting. But the cost of living versus the salaries here are kind of high there. We did offer two females, the community directed job, and salaries were high enough to accommodate their living. Something that we probably need to figure out, and I'll have to figure out some new recruiting strategies. Another thing that I have identified and discussed with Shannon is there is pay gap between men and women here in town. So we can fix that by implementing some of the basic appropriations that's happening.
Amy, on that one, let me just say, while I reported to you guys when we were going through our budget cycle, that basically on average, we are where we need to be. We were keeping pace by looking at the other labor sheds in some of our cohort towns. There were some positions that I basically overlooked, and so that we needed to make some adjustments to. And so I will be focusing on those for the next fiscal year to make sure that when we build our budget, that we take care of these issues. So surrounding yourself with competent people helps you stand your toes, so remember that.
I also kind of talked to Shannon quite a bit about adverse impact or disparate impact and how some of the management actions-
About what? What were they again? I couldn't remember.
Adverse impact.
Adverse impact.
Where it's a, it's a behavior in that isn't intended to be discriminatory, but can in fact be discriminatory. So we're doing some training or management about that. This past Monday, I did a presentation on the Federal Employment Act, and that's Title VII. That protects on race, color, religion, creed, national origin, sex, age, physical or mental disability, and baron status. June fifteenth is a pretty important rule that Title VII also now covers sex discrimination, which includes gender identity and sexual orientation.
What was the first thing you said? It includes, you said-
Gender identity.
Okay, can I?
Gender identity and sexual orientation. So that ruling made that be in kind of standard Title VII. So I just wanted to go over all of these discriminatory laws or the anti-discriminatory laws with our management, because we are getting more women, more diverse groups in here, and we need to make sure they know what discrimination is. It leads to harassment and retaliation is against law. All of those things are against law, so we need to train our managers to make sure we're treating everybody in the workplace.
And I-
And practice this.
I totally support what we're doing. I do think it's necessary. I think it's, it's good. We're seeing a change in society. I think in order for us to have a workplace where folks feel like that, that they can be themselves, it's important, I think, that we, that's right. And we talk about these things and make sure that, you know, we have a workplace where everyone can feel comfortable working in this place. We're focusing on performance. That's the biggest thing, but also we just need to make sure that we create a workplace and a workforce where folks can be themselves in this vulnerable.
Shannon and I are going to be working together on changing the workplace, which is kind of more inclusive, and making sure that everyone in town is treated-
Amy, other than the percentages that you said we could have a better, where we could have a better representation, have there been any specific issues that have, where we've run afoul of the regulations in any way, or that we have, where anybody has been harassed or retaliated?
I have not heard any specific complaints, but I have received calls from the women in town. So we're going to work to change-
I'm sorry. I have found a shotgun too, way too many times in my life, and my ears ring all the time, so it's kind of hard for me to hear.
It's based on some of my observations. I've not had any specific complaints from any female employees. It's just my observations, what I am seeing. So we're going to start training and mitigating some of these behaviors, so that everyone feels like they're-
You have observed some occasions where maybe something was said inappropriately, or-
No, it's more of an adverse impact that I was explaining. It's-
Not intended to be-
Not intentional discrimination, but in the being discriminatory.
Was somebody that maybe just didn't think through what they were saying, or something like, I'm not sure I'm following a hundred percent.
It's not, it's more of an attitude rather than a specific action. These are just things I have heard. So-
Can you get, give me an example? I know we're, you know, you can't get in, I wouldn't want you to get into personality, but can you give me an example of what you're talking about?
Um, I don't want to betray a confidence-
Yeah.
-of the employee that I'm most concerned about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's having those gender roles that the female has to go set up the lunch or clean up after lunch, you know? We don't have, that, that gender roles seem to have, from the outside, seem to kind of include some of the behaviors within our workforce.
So here's, here's, here's one, here's one that maybe I've talked about. So when we look at, and I think it's okay if we're supposed to talk about it, not, not breaking the names, but when we looked at folks, and you just look at the folks in the town that are keeping the minutes for meetings, you know, there are no, currently, there are no males keeping minutes for any of the meetings that we have. Now, in prior times, there were some. Counting them is to keep minutes for the boards that he served. But currently, right now, there are no men keeping minutes for any of our meetings. So on its face, you can walk in and say, well, it's all women keeping minutes. And you start looking into the issue, and you begin to see, well, person by person, you look at the roles that the different people play for the town, and you can see how they were assigned to keep minutes. It wasn't necessarily based on their gender. It was based on the positions they were in or the extra time that they had, and that's how those assignments were made. But on its face, when you come in and you look at that, there are no men keeping minutes. It's all women.
Excellent example of that person fact, right there.
Yeah. So I think when we think about, it just helps me to be aware of that, and as we think about it in the future, as we move forward, you know, just making sure that we are staying aware of those type of things, and that we don't end up making assignments, you know, not being aware of other factors. We make assignments, and all of a sudden, it's all women doing this. You know, we're all men doing this. We, right now, all our department heads are men. Is that because they're, because they were men? Did it end up that way? It's those types of things we need to be aware of as we make future decisions, and just stay aware of our decision-making, and make sure that we're not putting folks in different roles because of stereotypical-
In a discriminatory manner.
Exactly.
It's like the offering the two positions to the-
Right.
-ladies that, that just couldn't accept it, you know? That, that will be an easy thing to overcome.
Right.
You know, I mean-
That's right. And I think another example would be that one of our, one of our managers, we're talking about succession planning, and we have one of our directors, a male, and talking about succession planning. When we hired field position, we were looking for someone that possibly could be a replacement or fall behind this director. Well, that person happens to be a female. And did we choose that person because they were a female? We didn't. We chose that person because they were qualified.
The ability.
Their ability. Strictly their ability. But as, as, as time moves forward, you'll see that person rise up into a director position. So it's not an easy thing sometimes to get your head around, but it does give me value in having these conversations to make sure we're making decisions for the right reasons, for performance, and then where we can, all things being equal, we do try to reflect the population and the society around us. It's a healthy internal conversation that we're taking.
And not only is it the right thing to do, but there is a liability to the town if someone files an EEOC complaint. So, I mean, we've got to make sure that we are-
Doing the right thing.
Doing the right thing.
Well, there are things we may want to do. Most government organizations, you know, they have a, a policy, okay? They have a sexual harassment discrimination policy. It basically says that we support equal opportunities, support no discrimination, we're free of that, and what it, what it allows everyone to do, it keeps reminding everybody that everything that we do has an impact. And if someone goes against that, it's, when you show them the policy, this is why you shouldn't be doing what you're doing. I don't think we have that policy.
Do we have a policy?
But it's not good?
That is-
Easy work.
We are going to be revamping that, because our policy on harassment right now makes a general statement about not discriminating on age and race and religion, but then it focuses on sexual harassment.
Yeah, okay.
And so we've got a larger section about sexual harassment, but it doesn't include all of the other things. So we, we need to revamp it.
I think a good first step would be, and I, suggestion.
Yes.
Revamp that thing. Let's get it to where it really covers everything that we, and especially if you can point to specific things we want to work on. Let's get it in a policy. Let's make it, let's go to town council with it, in the public venue, support it, sign it out. It's a great place to start. And then, and then we're always reminded of that.
I think so too. I do, and I'm supportive of this effort, strongly supportive. And the conversations I think with Amy have been very helpful.
Well, changing the culture doesn't happen overnight. It's going to take some work. Shannon and I are going to keep working on it, and just continuing to educate our, our managers and continuing to try to recruit a diverse workforce.
Any, any questions or thoughts for Amy as we move forward? Amy, you did a great job. We appreciate you. Thanks, Amy. Mitchell's been working on a pow bill map, so if you want to tell us just a little about that, and what power is being made.
Yep.
And Sam's here too. Sam can join in on the pow bill discussion too.
So the pow bill's a group effort. Essentially, I coordinate the certification statement, the street listings, the map, and any additions or deletions to the map. That is due between July first is when you can start submitting, and I think it's the twenty-ninth is the last day you can submit in July. So the certified statements and the certified pow bill map, I'll be working with a surveyor, Spencer Survey, or the town has used him in the last past years, to get all of our documents surveyed for submission.
So the pow bill is that, is that document that we submit to the state that they use to give us a distribution of the revenue that they collect from gasoline tax for us to make road repairs to our own town streets. And so it's not a lot of money, and it's based on two items. They, they look at, it's a formula. It's based on your population, and it's based on the miles of town streets that you maintain. So this goes into the formula, and they distribute that money back to you, or give you the money, a portion of the money they collect, so that it helps you maintain your public streets. But again, it's not like there's ever enough there to do anything largely significant with your streets. It's just them feeding something into it. And two, two fiscal years ago, Sam, we had a, we had a company, a transportation company to evaluate our streets and the condition of the streets. They created a priority after they, after they did the assessment. And then, so we're basically using that schedule to pave our streets. It's not based on politics. It's based on data, it's based on facts, and so we are working our way down that list. But in addition to pow bill money, we then had committed to put another hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year into paving our streets. And so we're back on schedule. We can do it. We had it in there this year. Because of COVID, we didn't get everything bid out, so we rolled it over to next year. So I think we're going to see some paving this summer of our own town streets. So we're taking pow bill money, and we're taking our own money, putting that together. That's the money we use to pave, maintain streets. So Mitchell's is responsible, working with Sam to create that document.
Yeah, it's a group effort, a group effort between Sam and I to get those documents submitted, to get some funds back essentially. There's a little bit of-
You're also self-spoken, kids.
I'm sorry. It's a group effort that Sam and I, I both hear. He, he has expenditure reports and stuff and other documents. He submits, and then I, but before he does that, I do the front-end work. It's, it's more of just the documents.
Yeah.
Is David involved in that process as well?
Yes. So Mitchell communicates with, with David about streets, which ones we need to add, which ones we need to delete. We found one that we need to delete. These streets have to be open to the public. They have to be a minimum on average of sixteen feet wide in order to qualify for pow bill repair, but we, we recently found where we had a street going to the dam on the pow bill map. And so, but that is gated. We, and it just slipped the town's mind. They put up a gate for security, but they never thought about taking that street off the pow bill map. So we're going to take that off the pow bill map, which will reduce our funding, but it's, it's not like we're getting a ton of money anyway.
Yeah.
But-
It's about a hundred thousand dollars, do I remember?
It's about sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
Oh, that's seven fifty-eight, though.
It helps.
Yeah. I mean, well, our total paving budget, it's only about three hundred K, isn't it, Sam? What is it?
Yeah, a little under that.
Yes, that's significant, yeah.
So Mitchell, as you guys know, was promoted to the Assistant Community Development Director position. I took the old title back. Mitchell is learning and doing a great job. He and Garrett, the Pennsylvania County is what I call them, are there, are doing a great job. And Mitchell is, he, he's already picked up his first certification, CZO certification. So he's now an official zoning official in the state of North Carolina. So he just has one more certification, and we're going to give him the tie-up. So he's, he's moving in that direction. So he's doing a great job. Mitchell, is there anything you want to talk about or tell us about that you've worked on and submitted?
The only other two big projects that I'm working on is one sixty D update. I'm sure everyone's heard of it. So I, the practicality of, of how it's going right now is, I sit at home on my dining room table with a highlighter, essentially highlighting areas that need to be changed based on the recommendations from the school of government. They provided a general checklist document of the highlights of those changes, and I'm just ensuring that our regulations are compliant. It's about a hundred and eighty-six pages of regulations that I'm just looking through one at a time, which is time-consuming. But you guys will eventually see all of that work after you've completed the boards. And then the other project that I'm working on right now is, there's a requirement for our Title VI policy to be adopted by the town. And it's very similar to Title VII, but it relates to how federal neighborhoods manage and implement town infrastructure, basically as being a non-discriminated basis. And that's, that's just a quick summary of that policy, but you guys will eventually see that in particular as well.
And that's something that DOT is required for all their, all the towns and counties and their particular divisions, that they basically update their files and adopt these plans. So that's something to look at.
They, they released a general outline that Amy and I have been reviewing other jurisdictional outlines, how they put their policy together. And we selected one that we liked, and now I'm just, I have to review it and then get back with Amy to see how we like it. And then it'll be updated through the committee as well.
Any questions for Mitchell? Sound tower?
I did hear a little bit of motion for the Blue Herring subdivision. They sent a really rough drawing. It's kind of hard to tell what they actually want to do up there.
Who, who sent it?
It was an individual who was working with Verizon.
I've got it.
I'm so bad with her name. I can't remember the first one. It starts with an N.
Is this part of, part of the first net issue, or is this something different?
Bonnie Newell.
Yes, that's her.
Bonnie what?
N W E L L.
Newell.
It's very informative. Of course, that's a conditional use permit for that district that would have to be vetted through the complaining zone board, utility, or development review committee, and a board of adjustment for those approvals. I sent our section of our regulations to them and kind of explained some of the setback arguments, and it's been-
So who's the investor? Verizon?
To my understanding, but that's just, that's just-
But that's new. That's not, that's not AT&amp;T and personal. That's someone different.
Yeah.
So what did you- She called me because she thought I was the other John more than one that has-
Oh, property.
Yeah. And I put her in touch with Mitchell, and I knew that Bob Cameron had had a site at one time in Chimmy Rock that was a good tower site, and I also knew he was familiar with the upper part of Firefly Cove, where there might be a-
Yep.
-a site there. So I put in touch with both of them, and she told me she was working for Verizon. She, I, I, I don't know why I thought this, but I, I think that she is probably a contractor that would say she was here for Verizon, and they wanted to improve their cell service and so on.
I hope they do.
Yeah. I mean, they all do. I mean, first and then did the same thing. They, the one guy, and does all the legwork, does all the easement, does all this, because Verizon doesn't want to, Verizon just wants to hear, hey, we're good to go. We've, we've got it all done. So that's, that's who this, that's what she does. And so is there anything from a town that we can help to facilitate this, or?
The town's already recently updated their, their communication-
Right.
-regulations to make it more streamlined and easy. Essentially, we don't require the big trees anymore, which was always a big-
But it's not our property that they're looking at. It's someone else's property, right?
That's correct. So, and it's, the property is a utility lot owned by a POA. And so that, that might cause some complications, because then it's, they have to deal with the whole POA.
Have we reconsidered our tank that was part of the Firefly Cove, that lot, that water tank is on?
Nobody's reached out for, for that. I don't, I never looked into it as how, what type of tower-
Not sure elevation-wise, if that's, if that's, how much around where that is to, does that join the state department?
Probably.
On the upper side of?
Probably.
How big is that piece?
I, I don't know. But it's something we may want to look into. I don't know. We've ever considered that. We'd be glad to work something out if they could put a tower on that parcel. It's on that side of the-
Yeah.
According to how far up the hill it goes, get one up the hill, put one up, get it up low.
Yeah. Just let us know, because I, I think that the tower is one of the single most important barriers that we have to start to bring us forward. And so if we can try to facilitate an easement or something, then we need, we need to get that tower in.
Absolutely. Mitchell, anything else you think of? If you guys have any questions for Mitchell. Mitchell did a great job. Thank you. Sam, you wait, give me a second. Just wanted Sam just to kind of give you guys a rundown of where we are at the end of the year with our budget. No specific numbers, just a general broad rundown.
Sure. We got roughly, we got one more week left of our fiscal year. It looks like all the department heads are in pretty decent shape. I think we have one, just one project that will carry over to next year is Dean's small generator. So we'll, we'll look at a budget amendment next month. That's pretty typical of what we had the last four years. Hopefully, that project will be finished by next month, the end of next month.
And I, I need to let you all know that I did speak with Sam yesterday morning about what we had discussed about his involvement in the, the group meetings, the town hall meetings, or whatever we're going to call them, call them, from the perspective of the budget and the reasons for the increases in the tax rate and things. And I didn't want to bring it on him, you know? So he's had, you know, twenty-four hours to think about it, but I, I just want you to know that he understands what we want to do. If we want to talk about any of you with him, that's usually-
Well, I think we kind of ties in with what Laura is going to be talking with us about, and that is the communication plan for the twenty-eighth. And so in that, we've kind of outlined everybody's role in having a place for that, so.
I have one question on that. Are we going to be okay for the twenty-eighth from a group meeting of the size it will be in regards to the restrictions?
Yes. So we're going to have it at the Gipper Torrey LLC, and William Morton has basically said that local governments have an exemption, so that you can have the type of meetings you need to have. So Laura, did I miss anything? Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding. And additionally, because that space is so expansive, we still would be able to do social distance seating. And even if we've got a huge turnout, there's the, we'll do that. That could be overflashed, so.
Oh, this is huge. I mean, if you put six feet in between chairs, you can still put a hundred and fifty people in there without running.
Should we supply masks?
It's a big thought.
I think it should be available.
We could offer, we could suggest people bring their robe, or if, if not, everybody.
I think that's a great thought. I do.
And have a hands-on application.
Yeah. Hands sanitizer, mask. Yeah, hands sanitizer and mask.
Yep. Do it like Costco, you come in with your mask, if you don't have one, here's one.
Yeah, yeah.
Sam, I've got a question for you, on the sewer rates, do we, do we have a green light to raise the rate? There are some technical things that we had to do with Romlin Mall to make sure that we were good to go. Are we through all that to raise the rates?
I, I talked to Linda, I, I think she's contacted them this morning to make sure that the rates now. I believe our, our next reading is next month, which is July, which is actually the old, will be the old rates that they read.
Okay.
So, um, I guess it would be the, the following month, August, August on will, will be the new.
Okay, great, Sam, and we're gonna do a monthly, is that, did we, we work through that? Ju- just kind of the same process, but just on a monthly basis, is that what we are?
Pretty much, I think, I think, well, it's like, they'll, they'll read every other month again. That second month, they'll, they'll, they're gonna be an estimate.
Okay.
And then that, 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 that month that they read, they'll either catch up or.
I got you.
Just either way, more or less.
I still think that's better, I still think that's my, my personal feel, I don't know how you guys feel about it, I think that's just a better way to put it.
Yeah.
Okay.
David Irwin told me that it takes all his staff a full week.
To go through and read all the?
To read the meters.
So, so if we were to read every month, that would tell you how much you're pulling down public works' time to work. So we're reading every other month.
Yeah.
And then this, this innovative way allows us then to fill every month.
I like it.
And so it, it works out.
How many meters?
Uh, I couldn't sit here and tell you.
Would it be?
Six hundred comes to mind, but I don't know that's, that's.
Wouldn't be tied to the number of users, because some.
Right.
Well, it's water meters, I guess everybody has a water meter, it's not like a sewer where you don't, you don't have a sewer meter, but.
I would say there would be six hundred customers, but that's, I may be off something.
Yeah, somewhere.
That's just water.
Right, okay. And, and did we notify the state of all the other particulars of our, our budget? Did we, did we submit the budget to the state yet?
Uh, you don't have to submit the budget until the audit.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we're good, we have a green light, we're, we're good to execute the plan.
Yes. And so really it becomes, find out what the issues are on the twenty-eighth, and let's talk through those.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I think, uh, we'll, we'll get into that in a minute, Laura, but we'll, we'll go over that, so that will segue right over that. Sam, is there anything else about the budget, any concerns, any red lights, anything you'd be?
Um, uh, we, we, we're, there's a discussion about, uh, the dam versus the hydroelectric. Um, last year, the last audit, uh, we had, uh, we had expensed out, um, Schnabel's work in, in, as a general fund expense, and the auditors, um, moved it back in the hydroelectric fund. And, um, I got, I think I got it cleared out with the auditors that we want to separate the hydro and the dam. There will be a prior year adjustment, um, on this coming year audit that will take, um, four, I think it's five hundred, uh, it's four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars out of the, um, out of the expense, hydro expense into the general fund, which will help our hydro fund. And that's what we, that's our philosophy, we want, we want to separate that.
I think that's right.
And, um, it's a violation, it's a one-time violation, but we need to do it, and I talked to LGC, that's fine. They'll, they'll write us up on a, uh, a prior year adjustment for that, but, um, going forward, we can separate, segregate the, the hydro and the dam expenses. That's a minor violation, it's, it's a, it's a violation that we need to take, so. Segregate the, 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 the dam and the, um, dam as a hu- a general fund and hydro as a hydro, um, expenses.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes sense, and, and then the other big decision point that we have coming up related to all this is, Schna- Schnabel's doing the engineering design on the low-level dam, but, but we still don't know how we're gonna fund that. Uh, but the options are, we set it up so that the general fund could do that as a last resort. We, we're, that's part of the point four-two to go forward, um, but we always have the twelve-point-five, uh, on the sewer if we needed to, or as we're working through this, a state, uh, legislated amount of money that comes our way. But we don't, but we can do, legally, we can do any one of those. Is that?
Okay, you got that option.
When do we think, when do we think Schnabel's gonna be done with the low-level design?
So, that's a, that's another Laura question, Laura has been pounded away at the grant, and so, uh, we can let her give us an update on, on that too. So, have you, Laura, can you just pick from your seat right there if you want to, it's fine. So where are we on the grant? So you're making a lot of headway there.
So, um, the grant is for the lower level outlet, or the reservoir drain, and we submitted that, it's actually to the twenty-fifth of this month, we submitted it, um, on Friday, and I just got a note back, I have been trying to inquire just to be sure that they have everything that they need, um, for our grant application. And I did get the affirmation this morning that so far so good, they have everything they need. But I think it's a process, because NCD EQ is a FEMA grant, so they are in coordination with the National FEMA Office. Um, so there's always some, some bad.
So, so just to clear, clarify, this, uh, it's design.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is design, the total design was a hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand, I believe is what it was. We were looking at, uh, a hundred and twenty that we would get from Schnabel, and approximately sixty that we would contribute to that. So, so when we were doing our planning for the budget, and we said, guys, we've gotta have money set aside to deal with these, this is exactly what we were talking about, you gotta have the money, uh, in capital reserve or your fund balance to, to match potential grants that come along, so Laura has been dogging this grant, and it looks like it's gonna be successful. We're gonna get a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from FEMA, we'll put up sixty.
I'm sorry. I would just say, we have applied, that's, that's what I would say.
We're gonna.
Positive thoughts, positive thinking.
I'll, I'll bet you twenty bucks we're gonna get this grant.
Yeah.
Because they want, they want this low-level outlet and that dam.
Yeah, the DEQ does, dam safety.
Wants it.
George Allen.
They were chomping at the bits to get us in the pipeline on this.
The stars are aligning in the white.
Exactly, no, that's, that's important.
So Laura didn't say I did it, so if we don't get it, you blame me.
Can we raise the bet to two and a half?
I think, I, I think this is, I think this is, and I think this is even bigger than the low-level dam, because I think with Steve Metcalf, and I think he's starting a workforce now, right? Has he started?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, with the infrastructure money, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of brewing, right? It's brewing out there. Now, the state is already endorsing Lake Lor to start to move forward on a dam, a- and so it's not this weird, you know, what, what's going on with Lake Lor, they're embedded with it, so it just makes it easier when the money starts to come from the federal level to the state to tap it, in it as a natural progression from the low-level valve to, to the next. This is theoretical, but this is how these things work, and so I think it's, it's, so Laura, what you're doing is you're helping us get the moment, get, start that rock rolling, and it's gonna pay dividends, I think.
And if we were to start this project, you asked about, uh, timeline, if we were to start the project in mid-July, it could be finished by December, and this project, again, is for the design deliberately, um, for the project, so.
So Schnabel basically sent the scope of work for the design, they detailed that out, that's been reviewed, and so, uh, Kurt has reviewed that, we got a little pushback from one of the guys at Dam Safety, North Carolina, saying, we think these charges are a little too high, so we said, Kurt, get in there and scrub this thing, see what you think. Kurt looked at it, said, I think it's, it's, it, it, it's right. Uh, and so we got Kurt's opinion on that, and then, uh, Schnabel even called DEQ, they had the conversation, so everyone's good about that now, so.
Oh, good.
DEQ, um, feels that we have the top engineer. I guess.
Well, that's good.
They have, actually though, in one of our meetings, they did talk about not having enough cost for a particular project, so, um, I'd have to go back and look at my notes to see what that was, but when they were participating in one of the meetings, I would have telephoned after the fact, so. I think they're trying to look out for our best interest, but it's really not their role apparently to advise us on the finances, but, um.
Listen, we're drilling a hole in the dam, okay? We don't want to get the lowest bidder in there to drill a hole in our dam.
We could call Dun-Dan Marks up if we need to.
Right, no, no, so my point being, so, okay, we're paying a, a few extra dollars, but we've got to make sure that thing is right. They crack that dam, they drill through it, they crack that, that dam?
We're done.
We're done, okay, so we can't, you know, to, to me, it's.
What's really great is that we are in this, um, process with this FEMA grant, so we've gotten in at the beginning on that first grant, and we haven't received the first eighty thousand dollars, but we did receive the confirmation, um, for the first eighty thousand that it was being processed, um, a week before last, so we should, any day.
It's in, in the mail.
But it does, it does require quite a lot of, um, follow-up.
So, what Commissioner Diorio said, what Laura is alluding to is the same thing. You get in this, this process, and so there's monies for study, then there's monies for design, then there's monies for construction, but if you get in on the front end and you get in that process, they won't cut you off if they have money, because now you're, they're, they're vested in your project.
They're committed and they're familiar with the pro- with the, with the process.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're definitely in the, in the loop with them, and I do feel that they're invested in Lake Lor. I mean, I have, have that sense, and there's, um, a lot of, a lot of backdoor dialogue with their office about our dam and the process, and lots of checks and balances also.
So I want to embarrass Laura and Sam a little bit too, so, um, you, you know the kind of work that Laura has been doing for us, it's, it's, it's good, it's good work. This is one that is, uh, foundational to us really turning the ship relative to this dam, and she has been extremely instrumental in staying on this from the get-go to make sure that we're in the pipeline to receive these monies. Without that, missing that first one would have been a huge mistake, error when I part, and she got all in, she stayed with it. She's worked closely with Sam, and, uh, to making sure as we move forward, we're, we're pursuing this. This is huge, uh, it's hard to talk about it in the community, because the community really doesn't get it, but this effort to get in this process, and we did, is huge, and I think there's gonna be different avenues, different people now looking at us, maybe thinking about us when it comes time for special appropriations and other things. They know we're doing all the right things, and that's, that's, it's, it's big.
Well, I see two things, and I see communication is key to all this, and we've got that, and I see finance is an understanding and helping people understand, and we've got the finance guy to do that.
Got it.
And I think, I think that's the right stick in the right direction.
I think even having, um, with the new infrastructure money being set aside, having been awarded a FEMA grant is, you know, that's part of the story, you know, when you start looking for other funds. I think that FEMA made an investment in Lake Lor, I think speaks well for the town, but we do have to talk about the fact that going forward with this project, we have to have a budget adjustment, so, because those funds for, you know, are thirty-five percent of the project.
FEMA's all reimbursement, so we have to front the money.
But we designed it that way, we went, we went up to point four-two to build up a little bit of capital reserve and have that seed money to get there, so I think, I think we're good.
And see, this is part of the story on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
It's, it's about cash flow, it's about having it in the bank, but it's about the cash flow issue.
Yeah.
And unless you get the revenues up where they need to be, you can't fund the projects you need to fund in order to even get reimbursed.
They won't even pump this stuff.
Right.
We don't have the cash reserves, we won't.
Right.
So we're getting there, we're showing results.
Yeah, well done, well done. And then once the momentum gets going, I tell you, that, it's working for us, and then it starts, it starts to click in. It's really just getting this thing started, and we, and I think we're there, I think in all aspects of all the inf- big infrastructure stuff, even the, we haven't talked about it today, but the, the downtown renovation down there, I think that's going to, uh, accelerate as well, and, uh, I hope that the state, uh, wh- what's the next step with that anyways, Shannon, are they?
So just, just real quick on that, uh, so I got an email yesterday from James Ledgerwood, who sent an email to DOT, and he had all the park folks copy on his email, and he was expressing some surprise that the plan that I gave to you guys, he didn't find out about until he spoke with me. He spoke with me because I saw him, and I basically chased him down, I said, James, it's like you guys have got some, some movement on this thing. He said, what are you talking about? I said, well, I got a plan for DOT, he said, I didn't have a clue, he said, they aren't talking to me about it, I said, you've gotta be kidding me. He said, I didn't know. So I sent him the email, so then he sends that email to DOT, copies a guy that he's been talking to in DOT about Lago Vista, and he's got all the park people copy on it, and so, uh, I got copy on it, and so he did his, sent them the emails and all the proof and said, hey, what's going on, DOT's not talking to DOT, and, and so my additive was, look, guys, whatever plan we look at, it needs to be, we need to have DOT and traffic engineers look at it, we all need to be on the same page. Look at all the stakeholders you had involved in the original plan. This time, we, I think you need to add Lake Lor Properties as a stakeholder, because this really impacts a lot of the property. And as we move forward, let's get everybody on the same page so that we don't flounder. And this stuff about DOT not even talking to other persons in DOT about plans they're working on with the state park, it's just not acceptable, it's not, we gotta fix that. So get everybody on the same page, get an LLP at the table, get DOT working with us and the state park is where we've got to go, so. We may be coming at it from different angles, but I think the interest is there on multiple parties, and I think that will begin to, will begin to coordinate and communicate, so we'll get there eventually, it'll just take a little time. I think last Laura's gonna talk to us about communications.
Thanks, Sam.
Same, thanks.
You guys probably saw this online, but this is, this is the latest, um, version, so you don't have it. So on the, um, meetings for the election, I think this is probably your next most important meeting that you'll be facilitating, um, that's my two cents about it, so it's important to really think it through and make sure that we project the message and accomplish the goals that you want to accomplish at this meeting. And so we've identified those goals right up front, and this, um, document is really initially for you, and then we intend to, once we get your input and include your thoughts and recommendations, we'd really like to share this on Friday with the other panel members, because we're asking them to prepare a presentation which has to be pretty concise, because, um, we are trying to accomplish a lot in two, in a two-hour period, so we'd love to get your input by Friday at noon, and then send this to all the other panel members, the consultants and the state representatives, so that they can prepare their remarks in any slide presentations well in advance. We are, um, planning to send an invitation to the meeting, um, this has already gone out, um, it was announced at the last town council meeting that we would be having this, and we announced the date, but we'll put it on our Facebook and our web, uh, site, and, um, I'm hoping also to share it at the end of each month. And I'm hoping also to share it at the end of each month, I'd send out a little summary in an e-blast. So I'd love to be able to send the invitation at that time. And we would like to have an online registration. And Michelle has helped me develop, or she actually developed this online registration link. So we'll use Doodle, is that what it's called? So you're probably off on air when signing up for meetings on on Doodle. But then they can also just email us if they want to register. But it would be nice for you all to know how many people are coming to the three different sessions. And if you if you would just also note that we have some times, kind of mapping out how much each segment would take. And if you want to take a moment to reflect, if we've given enough time to each. I know one thing that we talked about when we first started discussing having this forum was making sure people had time for questions. So although there's a lot of information we're providing in each of these segments, we do want to allow time for questions at the end. And we have thought through and I know John, you recommended that we make sure we have a card that if people, you know, would like to submit their question, instead of reading it out loud, they could put their name, their phone number, and their Lake Lour address.
I I don't necessarily think we need their phone number, but I think we need their name and their Lake Lour address.
And so we'll make sure that we have those cards available at the meeting so people can submit their questions either way. And I'll stop there and give you time to reflect or make comments.
We've got a lot of people on here, are we are we gonna have time?
Well, so maybe maybe we should just run through, of course, you know, moving beyond to the consultant, beyond the town council, to the consultants. We know it's critical to have Jonathan speak on behalf of the dam. And we have targeted Reese to speak on behalf of the sewer system and then Kurt to speak on behalf, and kind of serve as the technical moderator, but also to speak about dredging. So those are our three core infrastructure issues. Then we want to set to speak from an objective point of view about the finances and why we had to really look at raising taxes and the sewer rates and the fees. And then we thought it was important for Steve and or John to speak. I think it's going to be Steve and he's already RSVP'd Steve Metcalf to really talk about what he is intending to do moving forward. So I don't know how you could eliminate any of those.
Okay.
And then the DEQ, the state people, we kind of, our strategy was having the state people speak only briefly after those others make their presentations, really those three core dams, sewer and the dredging, to speak to, yes, you have to do this.
Okay.
Basically, you know, validating that we're not, there's not fluff here, these are things that are mandated and required, in fact, have been for some time. So it is a lot of people, those three large panels, but.
Are, oh, is is there anything we're look, any input we're looking for from Walter Dalton or Brian King or?
Just have them present for a second.
Good, they'll just be there.
They would be in the audience, like I would, I'm thinking we would reserve maybe the first two rows for these distinguished guests and whomever you want to have. I think Shannon, you sent a special invitation to these folks already?
I teed some of them up, yes. But but I think that based on this meeting today, I've got some some additional names I want to throw out there to see what you think. I think I think Ralph Heiss needs to be invited. Ralph Heiss is Senator, well, Kellyanne Center. I think David Rogers needs to be invited, whether or not they come, you know, it's up to them, but I think they ought to be at least invited. I think we ought to invite, now that we know who's going to be running in November for the eleventh congressional district and we're in the seat, I think we need to invite invite Colonel Mo Davis, who is the representative from Shelby's, Democrat, and also Madison Cawthorn, who is the Republican representative who lives in Harrison County. I think they ought to be given an invitation to speak. No matter who goes in, we want them, we want them prepped and ready to think about us.
Should should we think about Mayor Chimney Rock?
Yes.
I don't know about town council from Chimney Rock, it might not be bad to, especially, special invitation to them to come because they're going to be affected by this with rates and stuff too.
I think we probably need to extend invitation to at least Senator Tillis. Both Tillis and Burresfield representatives have been very easy for us to work with and communicate.
They might want to send a representative.
I I'm sure they probably will, yeah.
How about the manager at Roman Ball?
Yes.
I don't know if he's a resident, if he lives here or not.
Maybe the the manager Roman Ball and their chairman of the board.
Yeah.
Well, the board, you might want to invite the board, they're invited anyway because they're.
Yeah, I think it'd be good. The more people we touch in this specific way, they'll help us to give the message out to the general public.
I mean, you'll send an invitation out, but they won't all be here at the same time. They could be ten, two, or so, so they'll be dispersed. At least you give them an option, you'll probably get more of them if you do it that way.
And I think we need to think about, you know, a specific invitation to UAV. Can't leave our old folks out, they need a special invitation. They've been all into this effort. And any of the other boards, I think inviting them specifically, saying we want you to come, they're going to help us with the message anyway.
Well, we've told them we want them to be part of the message, we want them to be part of getting people here.
So Parks and Rec, UAV, LAV?
And we, I know in UAV and Parks and Rec, we gave a copy of the investment article that everyone helped give input on.
Yes.
And in there, we we talked about this meeting, so I know they have it on their radar.
Who is the moderator option, Scott Datsun?
Scott Datsun is the director, and this is kind of a strategic move on our part. Scott Datsun has thirty-year experience as a city manager of various assembly places. He is now the director for Isothermal Planning Development Commission. That is our local local COG. So we send representatives to the COG, the Council of Governments, what it's called. And they then oftentimes can help us get work on grants, network with folks in the COG. And so our COG is made up of counties of McDowell, Cleveland, Pope and Rutherford, and all the towns in those four counties. And so they all make up the COG. It's a great way for us to 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 network. And so Datsun is the director of the COG. He understands infrastructure, he understands municipal operations. Datsun, I believe, would be a good one who can ask somebody, okay, who's next? They give a question or he reads a question, he'll know who to send it to on these panels.
Yeah.
If we get a moderator that doesn't understand what we're doing, they won't know who to direct that question to. And Datsun is the type of guy that can read that question and say, you know, I think this is a good question for DEQ. And he knows all of them, he knows Steve Metcalf. And so I think Datsun is a good one to kind of tie this together. He also is a neutral person in this process. And can can help us and can serve as a great neutral person to pull people together. And he will help us, he will also get educated on our issues. And so having Datsun as a friend, helping him help us is going to be real value. Did I say it?
I didn't hear any objections. We need to make sure he can come, make sure he has.
Your turn, yeah, I said your turn.
Well, I think it's great.
The one caution we have is the engineers have a tendency to go into way too much detail with these guys. And so we really got, we got to limit, limit.
I don't know that an engineer goes into too much details.
I'll start right now, so. What we need to do, what we need to do is. We need to, they need to get out the major points. They need to really keep it top level, you know, and and like the dam is good, it doesn't meet these two standards, this is what we're going to go after. You've got the best engineering firm, that's kind of the general message. Let the guys like Datsun and Metcalf come in and say, this is how we're going to fix the problem. Because the people of Lake Lour are going to hold us accountable for this thing, not the engineers. And we don't, they'll they'll think that we're putting up a smokescreen if we get over-technical with the engineers. They'll get confused and they'll and they won't understand really what we have to do as opposed to what would be nice to do. So I think from a time perspective, we need to really have a little talk with Kurt, Jonathan and Reese. And they'll they'll get this, to say, you just need to put out the, you know, don't get caught up into the the weeds of when, how, who. Just kind of the what and the framework and let those other guys come in with the how.
Yeah, so I think we probably can manage that by time-boxing their presentation. And then I think we also can manage a little bit by asking them to submit their slides for us to review.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And if we time-box them and review their slides, I I think that's going to be, and then hit them with the, guys, make sure you hit the whats, the details are not as important.
Right.
I would make one other recommendation, that you consider having a dry run.
Yeah.
Virtually, I mean, if people want to come, that would be great too, but at a minimum, to have a dry run virtually so that they have a chance to go through their slides, the DEQ people have an opportunity to see what they're presenting. They can hear and think through because, again, I think this is a critical meeting for our town and we want it to go seamlessly and we want to be able to anticipate people's questions.
So we need to set a date for the for those guys to submit their slides and set a date to a Zoom meeting.
Right.
And and then we got to have time for them to adjust their slides and have them ready by the twenty-eighth. So there's a little bit of process.
And maybe that has to be a, if all of you are present, maybe you need to.
Zoom.
Consider changing the date of your July workshop.
We cancel it.
So maybe you want to have a, I don't know if it's a special meeting or what, Michelle knows the criteria, but to have a run-through with everybody there, you'd need to look at your availability for doing that if you all want to be present for that. And is that a special meeting?
It is, I mean, if you don't have a quorum, you don't have to call it, I mean.
So we could, if you guys wanted to be a part of that, we could we could do it that way or you could.
Or two could group or something, right?
Yeah, you could send two folks to do that and not have the entire board.
I think the mayor needs to be there because she's got an important.
She does.
Message to start off, so definitely her.
And the close.
And the closing, yeah, so.
Can you have the mayor and two two commissioners?
Well, I would I would suggest that we have the mayor and Commissioner Doria.
We can have an engineer hold the engineers accountable.
We have to, if that's what you want me to do, I think it's important, you know, we just need.
I mean, I guess somebody wanted to come, like one of us wanted to come and say, no, we couldn't, right?
Yeah.
Could we do that?
It's a Zoom meeting?
Well, if it's a Zoom meeting, does it, there won't be any voting or any any motions made or anything like this? It's a dry run or a presentation?
Let's just advertise a special meeting and whoever wants to come.
They always say advertise for, it's not my heard anything.
Yeah.
If all of us want to be there, we can.
Yeah, we can, okay.
We don't all have to speak, but if all of us want to be there, we can.
And we'll do that on what day, do we know? Or you'll get with Carol and make sure.
Yeah, we can get with Carol.
The other, do you have a suggestion for a date?
Well, maybe maybe y'all want to tell us dates that won't work, I don't know if that's the easier way or.
How how soon do you think we could have that meeting?
I would say if you could have it by the middle of July, that would be ideal.
Because you want them to submit their slides in advance, so you've got.
If we send it to them Friday, I think, you know.
Get your slides done by.
Yeah.
Friday, I mean, even Friday, July seventeenth, if they're done by then, we can schedule the meeting for the first of the following week, twenty and twenty-first.
You won't get everybody, I mean.
UAV is, when should it be, third Tuesday, second Tuesday?
Or Monday?
Third Monday.
There's a Monday or Tuesday.
I can meet on the fourteenth, it's our regular meeting.
Yeah.
What about Thursday, the twenty-third? Is Friday a good day or not a good day? I would, I have, I've got a doctor's report on the twenty-second, I can change it, that's not a problem. ABC Board meets on Monday.
If you're gonna, you know, people are going to need to change, then if adjustments are going to be, need to be made, you're going to need to, you know, a few days in there.
Wednesday seems to be a day that we don't have a meeting. Tuesdays seem to be strong and then Thursdays we have meetings.
Yeah, the twenty-first is structures, appeals, but it's at one o'clock in the afternoon.
And that's on one day, but.
Tuesday, the twenty-first of July?
Tuesdays, you've got plenty more, you've got more adjustment.
Well, let's say.
That says only a planning meeting, twenty-first. Twenty-eight will be the other.
Wednesday, the twenty-second?
Right.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Is the twenty-second work, Laura, is that too late?
Do we need to back it up and go the fifteenth?
I don't think so, I think the twen- it's a balance, right? Because you don't want to do it too early, people forgot about what they said they were going to say. So, no, it's true, so the twenty-second, I think, would be good.
Submit their slides by the second.
Gives everyone plenty of time to regroup. The other thing that you got to worry about is the, like the state in particular, to come out and say something that catches everyone off-guard and just throw, you know, and just kind of throws that turd or whatever on the table and then we, you know, everyone's caught. We don't want to be in that position. So we really need to know what, you know, what, in general, not exactly, but in general, what everyone's going to say.
Yeah.
The other thing I think would might be helpful to think about doing is y'all have your acquaintances and friends in the community know what would likely be the questions. I think it would be wise to think through, these are the questions we could get, now who's going to be point on that and what is the answer going to be? You know, to feel, make sure everybody feels calm.
When everyone signs up, can we ask them to 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 query when somebody signs up, say, if you have a specific question, if you'd like to be addressed at this thing? Is that a good time to do that? Because you'd be able to accumulate that data. They're going to be here and this is what their concern is, and that would be something, we could filter to to everybody? What do you think? I don't know if, does Doodle do that?
Well, we we can figure out a way to to for people to submit their questions if you want to do that. I mean, so we can get, you know, the real questions, but I was thinking it might be valuable to anticipate, based on your knowledge of the community, what you think the questions are going to be, but we can do that actual question.
People say the darnedest things, so it'd be kind of nice to know what they're going to be before we we get there.
Well, you know, we might even get into a situation where we get more questions than we can answer.
Right.
And we would answer those afterwards and respond to the people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe an email address as a part of that, you know, the question or whatever ritual is written down.
When you think about this being, and the overall objective is to be able to explain to the community why the rates are going up.
Right, right.
Why are the rates going up? And this is why, I'm telling you, I think after the, after the consultants and after DEQ basically stands up and says, I think Commissioner made the made the best statement, is it's not something that we want to do, it's something we have to do.
Right.
That's it, that's the answer. And we're trying to give them more detail on why we have to do this.
And there won't be any questions asked until all the presentation is completed.
And when they say, well, when you going to, when you going to start pouring concrete on the dam? We don't know that yet.
Right.
You know, there's there's a lot of that, but.
There's a lot we don't.
We don't know.
How many times you have to have the lake down? We don't know that.
We don't know that.
You know, we we don't, there's lots of things we're not going to have the answer to. You know, we, we don't, we, there's lots of things we're not gonna have the answer to.
Yeah. All we're here today is just try and explain to you why your rates are going up.
Right.
And to let you know, it's, it's the real deal, folks, it's not, we're not raising rates because we'd like to generate a lot of revenue, put it in the saving account of local government. We're, we're doing this for a reason, and this is why.
So how do we prevent the, the folks that are gonna get up there and say, hey, there's noise outside my property when you're dredging? And, you know, they're gonna, it's all, it's gonna be about something personal to them, but that's not what our objective is with this meeting, so that, that, you know.
The meeting questions need to be directed specifically at.
Do you wanna look at the, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine. It needs to be directed at exactly what the purpose of this meeting is. It's not a, it's not a meeting to air grievances or ask questions about stuff like this.
Do you, uh, the ground rules, do you wanna refine, refine those?
What page are they on?
See if I can remember, I remember right, I can hear they on page four.
I think Datsun could go over that at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
And the mayor can say, this is why we're here.
Right.
And your questions need to be relevant to the issues at hand.
Yeah.
And, and so we're, write your question down, we're gonna be looking at these. And if we don't feel like it's a relevant question, we may not answer it today, but we will answer your question.
No, that's good, that's perfect.
We'll, 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 by email or whatever.
We'll get an answer.
That's right.
But maybe not today.
Right.
Yeah, all of your questions are important, but we only have time today for the ones that are directly related to this meeting.
That's right, we've only got two hours.
You, you will get those.
Oh, you know, you know you were going.
Yeah, that's, that's good, I like that. And have all the questions put on cards.
Yes.
And we can, yeah, deal with it.
Yep.
You'll get, they can give them to the moderator, and the moderator.
Yeah, let him, let him.
Save them out, yeah.
Yeah.
Scotty, we could even have a, a couple of us or whatever, three or Laura or whoever, five, pick, um, part of the staff. Well, they're gonna be working the staff is, to review the questions. To say, is that what we're gonna answer now or is that one that we're gonna say to later?
Of course, they need to listen to the presentation before they write out their questions.
That's right.
So there, there's probably not time for maybe, yeah, maybe the moderator looked at, well, this, this is a valid question, this is.
In the electronic invitation, you know, we can include the register with the Doodle link. And then I can say, if, if you have specific questions you wanna make sure we address, please send them to my email.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I can capture them.
Right.
And then we can sort them.
Sure.
And we can proactively address them.
Right.
Through the consultants.
That would be a big.
That's a great, great idea.
And so I don't know how many people will respond that way, but at least we will have given them the option.
I guess we wanna make sure they understand that we're looking for questions that are relevant.
Yes.
This.
Right.
Yeah.
As a subject.
And they can, you know, just like they could anything, they can send a question to staff or town.
I mean, and they send them all the time.
And they could, they could ask a question that the answer is readily available too, we just go ahead and answer the question.
Yeah, I don't think anybody in Lake Worth is bashful, but I don't.
Well, no, but what they do do is.
They don't.
They, they, you know how they do this, all right? They don't really send anything to us to, to, to work on, they just kinda throw something out there to see what sticks. And you wanna, you wanna minimize it, yeah? The other thing we have to be careful about is the town council outsourcing the operation of the town to engineers and consultants, okay? We're not doing that. We are the ones driving it, and we're knowledgeable on that. So what the mayor says is crucially important, but I think it's also important if, if we can engage, if it's appropriate, at, at a time, that we talk through that too, so that the people know that we're in, in charge of this thing. Here, here, here's who we're relying on to, to make the good decisions, but we are the decision makers.
We're not sitting.
Exactly. We're not sitting back outsourcing the operation of the town, we're taking an active role. So we just, we, you gotta be careful.
We're paying for the best advice that we can get that's available.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So that and Carol's open statements, that, that, that would be.
Yeah.
Yes.
The sign of a good leader is surrounding yourself with people who are more knowledgeable than you.
That's what you're.
That's easy for me to do.
Right.
Well, nobody can be the expert on all these issues.
Right.
Yeah, right.
A town twelve hundred, a town twelve hundred to be tackling this stuff or tackling.
Is, is, uh.
Now, this is, I, I hope, I hope those folks come, they probably won't go to each one of the meetings, but if they sprinkle themselves out through that, um, that, that would be good.
So one more related question I have, if I may, is the investment article. What is the timing on releasing that? Where do y'all wanna go with that? Or is that something you wanna have at the meeting to give out, or is that something you wanna give out ahead of time?
I think we wanna release that right away. I think we wanna start to get the feedback from that, because you'll get questions in there too, you know, once, once they see that. So I think, we wanna put that out.
I would say that article with the, the, the information about the twenty eighth would be a great way to stir their interest.
That's a good idea, too.
On the twenty eighth, if you have the information on there, the times, and where to come to, I think would really stir things up in a good way.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't mind even having a sheet, a one sheet, or folded or however, that I can have with me. As I'm at lunch and I see people and I'll say, are you, are you aware of where the meeting we're having? Well, I hadn't heard anything about it, well, here, here's, here's all, all the, all the details. And, and, you know, I, I mean, that's, uh, give them to your neighbors, I mean. You know, there's lots of ways to, you know, to, to make all that happen.
That's a real good idea.
You know, and, and if we could, and, and advance, and you all may have talked about it while I was a rester, but, and advance article to Courier. You know? Advance article to Courier, that's, that's a, the most important meeting in Lake Worth history is, is scheduled for July the twenty eighth, you know? How do you wanna say it? But, uh, get, get people where they'll say, well, what about that meeting I heard about? What's up with that, you know?
And the, and the, and the fact is, the budget has been passed, and it's meeting on the twenty eighth. And we're gonna use that budget, that is our spending plan as we move forward, the twenty eighth is a ch- is a chance to explain why. And if folks don't come to the meeting, you've done all you can do.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Sure, we gotta do that. Would Bonnie, Bonnie at Courier, would you be the best one to do that?
Well, I was just gonna ask, how would y'all feel about, um, I'm sure they will put there, there's no question. I mean, we're in touch with Bonnie daily. So that's no problem.
Because she wanna be or don't?
Well, both, both, I mean, it's a very, a very, um, good, strong relationship, I think.
It is.
Um, but what about even purchasing, you know, put the whole thing in there?
Amen, that's a great idea.
A page, or I don't know how much it would be, but.
That, that way we control what's in there.
Yes.
Yeah.
In other words, yeah, you're.
Because Bonnie gets a lot of things wrong, trust me, she does.
Well, but, but here's the thing.
Me too.
Now, the, the circulation for the Courier, Courier up here is not what you think it is. No, it's, it's not delivered anymore, it comes through the mail. And the, the circulation is just, you know, that doesn't mean it won't touch some people because of.
Oh, well.
This, this, um, the end of this week, the breeze is coming out and the mayor has used, uh, basically a paragraph from the article announcing the town, the town, community meeting. So that is coming out, and I'm sure a lot of people read the breeze, don't you think?
Yeah.
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 So there will be that, um.
What about the churches maiden list and stuff, that, that?
I can send it to all the churches, they're in our mail group for sure.
Like the chapel, you know, and all of that, that can use letter go to and those things?
They're probably looking for things to send out.
Yeah, that'd be good, you send it to the churches, that way we could hang a basket around too.
Yeah, right.
Always thinking.
A lot of all, a lot of all, a lot of all.
But I think a word will get out there.
Okay.
He calls that prosperity gift.
I don't know, I don't know what the zoning requirements are, but what about a special sign outside?
I think that would be most progress.
You know, one, the stuff, the lights are, I, I don't know what we can get by with, but, you know. I, I don't really have, have a problem with saying that we can, we can advertise this as the most important.
Yeah.
Meeting in, in Lake Worth history.
Well, I tell you, our signs out here, the, the.
By the minute?
Yeah, because I have a complaint, so, because we hadn't changed the meeting date from March. You know, people look at it, they're ready to. Bobby, somebody, you know, one of the workers that's working on my outside, you finally got that meeting sign changed to the right date, you know?
Oh, yeah, 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 I have my key out front. But I think we're in the window now, you're, I mean, we're.
Yeah.
People, in order for people to make plans, some people will have to make plans to be at one of them, I think we start right away.
Build up a poster in the post office.
Yeah.
And then.
Sure. Let by seventeen.
Boy, y'all, y'all stand up like, get ready.
Yeah, I just.
I've, I've, I've got a hamstring giving me a fitness.
But I think we're good with the, we're good with the, uh, the messaging. Um, unless you guys had, wanted to take a look at it one more time. So I think, I think from our perspective, you're, you're, it's good for release.
Yeah.
If there's something comes up, I'm gonna do such an email week.
Right. There's always gonna be interpretation of data that is like in the field, you're always gonna get that.
Well, yeah, Ms. Creasy?
This is sharp, this is really sharp.
Very good one.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good with that?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. I wanted to, um, talk with you guys for a minute about, uh, the town manager contract and so forth.
Can we talk about that in this meeting?
Yeah, we're not making a decision, but, you know, talk about anything, we're not making a decision on.
No, because it's a special meeting.
Uh-huh.
Is this a special meeting?
No, this is our workshop.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, because you said, in the advertisement, you said any, any related.
Yeah.
Workshop.
Okay, very, yeah, you're good. Just wanna make sure it wasn't a special.
Yeah, regular work, regular meeting, it says.
And I would like for maybe Shannon to step out.
Yeah.
Do we, do we wanna go to the conference room, maybe that'd be?
Oh, that might be pushing.
Oh, that's pushing, yeah, we gotta stay here.
Yeah, we'll stay here, but Shannon and Laura maybe would excuse themselves and we'll.
Absolutely.
We're out of here.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Okay, Michelle, say?
Yeah, I think so.
It's not closed session, she has to.
Well, I, I will say, we're in open session.
Yeah, we're in open session, yeah.
It's still public.
Right, but the employees, I thought, yeah.
We're not streaming that way, you're just taking notes.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
It's streamed.
Laura's streaming.
Oh, yeah, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, we're streamed, yeah.
I mean, if you guys wanna call a closed session.
Can we call a closed?
Can we do that without?
You're gonna make your agenda.
Okay, all right, well then, uh.
We can do that without.